Places, but it's just, it's still a huge mountain to climb.
It's not, it's not enough. The, the number I said before, we have 16, 1.6% of the treatment capacity we need. This settlement, even if it only went to drug treatment, as we talked about, is going to other things too, education, prevention.
Good evening. It is City Council Regular Meeting, December 2nd, 2020.
Recording in progress.
It is December 2nd. It is the regular meeting of the City Council of Lewisville, Colorado. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson. Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Present.
All right. If you could have a joining with me and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. The first item on our five o'clock agenda is an executive session for real property acquisitions and disposition. The, under Charter Section 5, 2(c) and CRS 2464024a, city manager is requesting that city council convene an executive session for the purpose of real property acquisitions and dispositions concerning properties in Lewisville, only as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy.
As noted on the meeting agenda, the city manager is requesting an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to Section 5-2(c) of the Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024a, specifically as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. One, where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and route property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategies. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2(c) authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024a of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves potential acquisitions of real property. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, and that the executive session also include city manager Diana Langley, Deputy City Manager Salma Fox, Community Development Director Robsick DeCaro, and City Attorney Kathleen Kelly. Can we get a roll call?
Second. You need a second, sir?
Yep. Second.
Okay. Now can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes. Okay. The city council will now adjourn to executive session. There'll be a note on the screen during this, and we will be back no earlier than six o'clock. And if it's later than that, we'll come back as soon as we possibly can. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're back in regular meeting having just finished our executive session. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing potential real property acquisitions and dispositions, and the City Council had such discussion. No follow-up is requested from the Council at this time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for hanging around here as we finish our executive session and take a few minutes before resuming. All right, so our next item is for approval of the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. You're welcome to provide comments on any matter that you choose. Just give, fill out a card that's outside the chambers and give it to the clerk. She'll call your name. If you want to speak then, just go up to the podium, tell us who you are. And whether you're a Louisville resident, every speaker is entitled to three minutes or six minutes if you are pooling time with another person in attendance or online. All opinions are welcome. Please be respectful of each speaker to ensure everybody feels welcome to share their comments. Please refrain from cheering, clapping, booing, or otherwise disruptive behavior. It's tough enough sometimes for people to get up and speak in public, it being the number one most stressful thing in many people's list of stressful things. So appreciate your understanding that. The other thing is that, as most know, we cannot, as a council and as individual council members, or the mayor, comment on anything that is said in public comment because it's not on the agenda. That doesn't mean we're not listening, that doesn't mean we're not taking notes or anything like that, we just can't comment. So, do we have any public comment tonight?
We do. First up is Jerry Foley, followed by Mark Miller.
So this is my first appearance in front of City Council. My name is Jerry Foley, and I am a resident of Louisville since 1984. I've been a member of the Coal Creek Golf Course since inception, and I have been a member of the Coal Creek Golf Course Women's League since inception. I was hoping I wouldn't speak first because I think what you're going to be hearing is a lot around the passes that are currently out there for 2026, the golf passes in the various categories. I'm going to save that for my fellow speakers because there is a lot of discussion to be expected around that. I'll just, as you all know, just make the comment initially that the increases are exorbitant. They're extremely high, not expected at all, and as a Louisville resident and as a senior, I am very upset about it, as you will hear from my colleagues, they are. So I'm going to not really speak to that right now. What I do want to speak to, however, are the rates, the actual rates that have not been published yet. Those passes are out there, we've seen them on the website. When we were, when I attended the advisory board meeting yesterday, there was sitting on the table for anybody's perusal, the comparison of the Coal Creek 25 to 26 rate schedule. Again, not published out there in terms of we as Louisville, not as a Louisville resident, but any resident, anybody who's going to go next year and what the rates are going to be. In here, it talked about the comparisons again, and for the standard rates for people aside from being a senior, aside from being a resident, military, et cetera, the rates are 55% increases basically, which I understand the Council was informed of. Underneath there, it says senior rates, and it says that the senior rate for 20, for last season for 25 was $45 for a senior to go Monday through Friday. And for the most part, it gets kind of convoluted, but Monday through Friday, mostly during the Mondays and Tuesdays was a cheaper rate, Wednesday through Friday was a cheaper rate in the afternoons, but whatever. The bottom line is that they were saying it was $45, and the new rates are going up, and I like the streamlining concept, but they're going up to basically $47 a round for, for not, for 18 holes walking, $47 a round in the afternoons, Monday through Friday, and $52 for a round for the mornings, Monday through Friday. That's what's being proposed. What I want to make clear is that, that $45 number, because if I go today...
Jerry, I apologize, your time is up.
Can somebody give her three minutes? I'll give her my three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. What I want to propose, what I want to explain here is that, right on the desk, on the desk, at the front desk, there is a bunch of pictures with rates, and the rates for the seniors that it says here, for anybody to look at, and what the desk uses to charge you, says that for seniors, Monday through Tuesday, all day, Wednesday through Friday, in the afternoons, it's, it's, and for 18 holes, it's $35 walking for seniors. Not the $45 that was described on the sheet here, but rather, we have been getting charged all year $35 for that walking 18 holes. When you look at that, what jumps in my mind is that, that 5% that applied to the standard rates, which was the, I think that was brought to the City Council, that that was the increase, those rates are not accurate when it comes to that senior rate. The rates are increasing for seniors between 49% and 39%, 34%, depending on the weekday and time of play. I went ahead and created a spreadsheet around what that looks like. So basically, what we have here is what I've just described. We have increases from Monday to Tuesday, that all-day rate, that jump not from the $45, but from the real $35 to the $52 rate, that's a 47% increase. We have increases for the Monday through, excuse me, Wednesday through Friday closing that, if you were to compare that with the $35 rate instead of the $45 rate, it's a 34% increase. So what I'm wanting to make sure that's clear here is that it's not 5% that we're looking at here, it's a much greater number. And I have always felt, I love Louisville, I've always felt that I was heard, and just as an FYI, I was one of the people that had their houses destroyed in the fire, and you guys were awesome. And I really support all the effort there. I have always felt that you listened to the residents, and what I am feeling now is very discouraged and unwanted, and like, my opinion doesn't matter in regards to wanting to enjoy the culture and the activities in Louisville. And I know that that's not what you want, and I know that that's not how you act. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Mark Miller, followed by Stephen Thompson.
Hi, everybody. I've been here since 1987, and took a trip down Main Street to City Hall and found out there was going to be a new rec center, a new elementary school, and a golf course coming in, so I said, "Sign me up." I've been here ever since. I moved over to the golf course, I have the home that's closest to the clubhouse, 100 yards away, and I've been there since 2000. I've been active with the regal membership, but I have to say, because of the preferences some of my golfing buddies, I'm only paying, playing one out of every four rounds I play is at Coal Creek. And that's because they prefer other facilities, and when we're making comparisons to other golf courses, it's not apples to apples. Over at Indian Peaks, they have expanded their, their facilities, they've got a, they've got a much bigger putting green, they've got a driving range that can accommodate many more people than Coal Creek has. Walnut Creek has not one but two suitable practice greens, and when I go to practice putting, which I do quite often, I go to Walnut Creek. I'm driving from essentially the parking lot of Coal Creek Golf Course, about six miles to Walnut Creek. Their greens are about four times bigger and can accommodate a number of golfers instead of just one or two at Coal Creek. The memberships and new policies, I would like to think that somewhere along the line, City Council did not get the information that the membership specification was 43% above prior years, 43%. Nothing goes up that much, nothing whatsoever. And also in the mayor's comments in the lantern, which I appreciated, was the, he appreciates the work that the golf course committee is doing, and in the next sentence, "We have a balanced budget." So we don't have a budget issue with the golf course, I don't believe, that we have to make up lost revenue for the golf course. Couple of comments from friends I play with. Let's play, and these are guys I've played with over the last several summers, they've had memberships too, let's go down and play Highland Hills. They have more facilities, they got a par three golf course at... Highland Hills. They have more facilities. They've got a par-three golf course and flat irons in Boulder. It's way cheaper, about a third of the cost of Coal Creek compared to the membership rate. I would need to play 47 rounds, not going to play 47 rounds. I would need to play 47 rounds of golf for the new cost to make sense to me. So I'm here to request, with my 10 seconds left, please put this on this December 16th agenda so that we can table this. I don't know why the timing came up now. Let's table this until April 1st. December is not the time to add this kind of cost into the household. I got nine, I don't know about you guys, I got nine Amazon packages just today. I got to pay for those. After that, there's not enough money left to pay for the renewal, and I'm not going to...
Mark, your time is up.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for your respect for our clerk, too. I appreciate that.
Next up is Stephen Thompson, followed by Rick Rothschild.
Hi, I'm Steve Thompson. I'm a youngster. I've only been here 35 years in Lewisville. Just to reinforce what the previous two said, yes, this is very much unexpected, a huge unwarranted increase. You know, the rec center, we always say rec center, but it's actually the senior and recreational center. And I feel that Coal Creek Golf Course should be called the same thing because when I'm out there, it's, most of the patronage is from the senior age group demographic. And these are the ones buying the passes, too. So the daily rate, I haven't made the comparison, but the passes certainly is, the number is thrown out about a 43% increase, which is way too much. So I've been, been here this long, and a lot of friends that play golf, and I have friends that live outside the city that I'll bring here, so they're not residents. I have the pass, but I'll bring them here, so you're getting the revenue from that, too. I know the golf course is a moneymaker for the city and could be a lot better. But the facilities we have are lacking, and if there was a 43% increase in the clubhouse, the putting green, the services, whatever, okay, maybe. But the services are going down. In fact, right now, there's no restaurant or beverage cart, whatever, you know, food, drink, nobody there. And they're wanting this huge increase, and it's kind of becoming, from my friends outside of the city, a laughing stock of that, why would you guys still continue to play there when they don't even give you near what we have? And I think the city could do a lot better. I think you could, we could attract, make it a nice, a much nicer facility, it would bring, generate a lot more revenue. But with the current thing, situation in 43%, aye, yeah, nobody's, people are going to be going elsewhere. And so with a planned 43% increase in revenue, that's not going to happen, apparently, is people be going elsewhere. So you're going to see a decline, and it's been declining anyway. So that's all. I just want to just say, it's hard for people to have this just thrown out with no justification for why. Like I said, if we knew, we'd be getting a 25% increase in our experience out there, okay, you know, it'd be a little more settled, but it's just not working out that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen.
Next up is Roger Hughes, or I apologize, next up, you're Rick, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, next up is Roger Hughes.
Wait.
No, you're Rick.
I'm Rick.
Okay, you're up next, sorry.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I'm one of those that doesn't like public speaking, so, but so I wrote down what I wanted to say. First, good evening to all of you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I speak tonight, uh?
Steve, correct.
Okay, Rick Rothschild, and I've been a resident for almost 30 years. And I want to speak about the new membership fee structure, not the green fees that we've already spoken to. And emphasize the fact that this is now a city-owned golf course, so keep that in mind. While intended to raise revenue, the changes are, I feel, inequitable and inconsistent with the city's mission and risk alienating the very community the course was built, I believe, to serve. So there's a few problems that I'd like to highlight, and I'd like to thank the city manager that sat in our meeting yesterday and summarized that for you also. Mission misalignment, Lewisville Mission Statement promises to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life. This fee structure does the opposite. It excludes seniors, residents, and families eroding the small-town atmosphere that we value. And if, when you keep hearing the 43%, you have to factor in the fact that things are being removed, like the resident discount and the senior discount, and getting to that 43%, at least in my case. That's the next point. Excessive increases, seniors face hikes as high as 43% or more. One residence weekday couples' membership jumped from 3,393 to 5,600 in a single year. Another regal member saw a 43% increase from 2,400 to 3,400. These are not minor adjustments. They are life-changing costs for those on fixed incomes, which I will become soon, and my wife won't let me play. Loss of discounts, longstanding senior residence and spouse discounts have been eliminated. This disregards the contributions of taxpayers and families who have supported the course for decades. Unfair timing, we've already addressed it, but members are required to pay by December 31st for passes that don't begin until April 1st. We believe this violates the basic accounting principles and feels like a cash grab rather than community stewardship. The reduced values, some have spoken to it already, stripped away, like removing unlimited range balls, and less booking windows than in past years. And there's also accessibility issues such as the lack of handicap flags, which raises concerns of ADA compliance. The regional comparison, I think some people have attached that to other courses that are more competitive. In prices, Flat Irons, for example, has a 1,300 for seniors, and now I have to close. Oh, my goodness. So what I'd like to propose is reinstating the resident and senior discounts, recognizing taxpayer support in fixed incomes, restore the spouse and family options to keep golf accessible for the community, and align the increases with, you know, COLA or whatever other standards are there. Return the unlimited range balls, and consider a counter proposal that we would be willing to make to make it equitable. And again, we don't have transparency to what is driving the increase, but thank you for the time.
You're Rick.
Next up is Roger Hughes, followed by Paul Richardson.
My name's Roger Hughes, resident of Lewisville over the last five years. I actually live on Number 13, so I get to see a lot of golf on a day-to-day basis. What I want to do tonight, though, is I want to walk through a timeline of how we got here tonight. Go all the way back to August 25th, at the Recreation Advisory Board meeting. That evening, Bo Lewis, Mark Jensen, both stood up and presented a 5% across-the-board rate increase for Coal Creek Golf Course. From that meeting, passes were not discussed. Actually, they said that they were not prepared to talk about the pass increase at that time. So this is back August 25th. One week later, September 2nd was the city council meeting, which on that agenda was the draft budgets for every department within the city of Lewisville. On page 82 of that deck, Subprogram 536 Golf Course Budget showed a 6% increase in fees. So there's already a 1% increase, but we didn't know what that increase was. Maybe the 5% just on the daily rate structure, but we didn't know about passes. Maybe the passes was the other 1%. There isn't transparency at that time to tell us what was actually presented to all of you on September 2nd. But the total operating budget for the golf course that night was presented at $3.5 million, which is the exact number that you all approved on November 3rd at the budget final approval meeting. So it didn't change. But passes finally got brought up on October 27th at the rec board advisory meeting. That is when Bo Lewis presented that there was going to be this 45% to 50% increase in passes. So this is already a month and a half after the budget draft had been presented, and it was right before that amount was approved by you a week, a week and a half later. So we're not sure, transparency, if you were ever told. And that's what I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. I don't believe the city council was ever told exactly what was happening with this budget and with these, the structure for the passes, and also understanding that they were eliminating resident, senior, and military discounts, which had always been part of the golf course passes throughout the years. And that was it. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Roger.
Next up is Paul Richardson, followed by John McDermott.
Hi, Paul Richardson, 10-year resident, sorry, 12-year resident, 10-year member of the golf course, and I also live on the golf course. So I get to see a lot of stuff in action. I'm going to take a little bit different look at this. But one of the things I really wanted to bring up, and I brought this up at the recreation meeting, and thank you very much for taking the notes. One of the things that we really value in Lewisville is support local. You know, we have our farmer's market, we have our music. It's a community. It's all about supporting the local people. And it's expected the local people then support the businesses in Lewisville. The challenge with that is that, that's a two-way street. If we don't feel like the city's supporting us in our golf, in our membership, then it behooves us to go elsewhere. And when we're looking at spending $60 or $65 to play the Coal Creek Course that I live on, I'm paying 20 to 30% premium to play there versus other courses that I can get to in 10 minutes in Westminster that are $42 for me to play a round. So I have to make a commitment to support this course. It makes sense, and I think everybody else here does. They play other places, but they come back here. The other point I wanted to make is, there's a lot of people in this room that take advantage of the Lewisville Rec Center. It's an awesome facility. I'm a resident. I'm a senior resident. I pay $272 to play there or to go there. If I'm not a resident, I pay $438. It's a 45% increase. If I'm 18 to 60, and I'm not, I pay 500 bucks, and a non-resident pays 755. That's a 33% increase. So why are we applying the value to our residents and our seniors in the rec center and ignoring that for the golf course for residents and seniors, which is also part of the same rec center process? So that's, that's the other point I really wanted to look at, is how are they different? I know you can't speak to it, but I want you to think about it, and I want you to think about the fact that we all have the option to go elsewhere. And when we do that, there's less revenue. The other point, and I don't think anybody's really brought this up, but if I make, if I join as a member and I spend $3,800, I'm committing $3,800 upfront to the city of Lewisville. That removes my option of going elsewhere because I'm going to play here a lot. If I don't feel that there's value in that, I can go somewhere else and you don't get the $3,800. We're not talking $60 per round. We're talking a large upfront chunk that many of these people in this room have committed to. And if we don't do that, that changes the finances of the golf course significantly. Thank you.
Next up is John McDermott, and he has pulled his time with John Larry.
Good evening. I'm John McDermott. I have been a resident of Lewisville for 33 years. I have been playing at Coal Creek for 35 years when I lived in Lafayette prior to that. And actually, since 1989, they had a soft opening. So my wife and I have been playing this course for a long time. This is the first time that I have ever felt disrespected, dishonored, treated like we're not cared about. And I think, how many of you are here about the golf course today? Just take a look at that. We're all here because I believe, and I'll back it up, that the new management team at the golf course wants to eliminate from their course seniors, I'm talking about the pass now. I'm only talking about the pass, the membership pass, seniors, residents, military, veterans, and people with special needs. By the way, that lack of handicap flag, I contacted the ADA today. They said if any of you want that flag, contact the Justice Department. They will send somebody out immediately to investigate. They cannot, and it's on their site. I read it today. No handicap flags will be distributed. They had better watch. Now, everything that everyone has said tonight, it's clear that they want to get rid of our passes. I'm the family that paid, my wife and I, $3,393 last year. Our bill this year would be over $5,600. Where in anyone's mind is that reasonable? I'm okay with reasonable increases, but that's insane. The city mission statement and vision statement, talk about very important things. Enhancing the quality of life. Vigor in a small town. Well, look at us here. It's not happening at the golf course. As a matter of fact, the opposite is. How is that possible when the mission and vision statements are supposed to guide all of us here? Now, there are a lumber of things, and I'll hand out this paper to you later, that were already talked about. But here's, here's one thing that I heard at the golf course. You know, we're getting rid of these memberships because people are playing too much. Those of us that are here are enjoying ourselves too much. We're having too good of a time and too good of a community. We need to charge them more. Well, they will be successful because we just won't come back. And I'm not speaking for everybody. I'm speaking for me and my wife. I contacted other golf courses already, and they were saying at the same time, no other golf course in the area, which by the way, isn't true, but this is what they were saying, no other golf course in the area offers these kinds of differentiated price cuts for their people. And this is just too much to deal with. Look at all these for military, for seniors, for senior resident, for resident. Now, why would they want to get rid of those? They want to get rid of us. And when they say no other golf course, let's say they were right. Let's say no other golf course in the area offered these things. So what? Lewisville is a community. Lewisville is a place we love. And if, if the city and the golf course is creating a place where we enjoy being by offering these differentiated prices, great. That's not to be looked at like a country club, which is where I'm afraid Coal Creek is going. And I, you may belong to country clubs. I'm not saying anything against that. This is a public course. When you want to push people out and make it just for a certain group, that's not who Lewisville is. So I want to just pull this together. There are many other points I want to talk about, but the most important thing is this idea of pushing us out. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next up is Jeff Meyer, followed by Don Brown.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Meyer. I've lived here about 12 years. First, I want to say thanks to all of you for listening to us. I've been to a number of these meetings, and sometimes you are attacked and abused, and anyway, that's not our intent. Our intent is to let you know that we're concerned about the Coal Creek Golf Course. I joined the Senior Men's League back in 2015 when the course reopened. Great group of people that we play with every Wednesday morning. After golf, we typically go to the clubhouse, have a couple beers, maybe lunch, spend some money. It feels like a club to us. And so because of that, I joined as a member so I could prepay. I could give the money in advance and say, I'm going to come and play as many times as I possibly can. So far this year, I've played 42 times. So I'm probably overpaying for golf, but it's okay. Coal Creek Golf Course typically has great people that work there. The pros are great. The pros are great. The staff at the clubhouse are great. The greenkeepers are great. The marshals are great. It's a great experience. But a 43 to 50% increase for a membership doesn't make sense. So, thanks for listening. Appreciate it. Happy holidays.
Thanks, Jeff.
Next up is Don Brown.
I unmuted, but I'm trying to figure out how to get the video to work. Is that important, or are we okay if I just speak?
Your pretty face is up there, Don.
Yeah, well, that's like five years ago, so at least more.
I'm not going to comment on that.
Please, it's, it's fair game. Thank you for this opportunity, Don Brown, 505 Grant Street. Been here a couple of years and, and, you know, a very active member of the Coal Creek Golf Community. First of all, I've heard a little "they" and "us," and I, I want to address that first and echo Jeff's comments that this is a great community discussion. This is the forum we all agree to have these type of conversations in. And it's not really an us versus them kind of conversation. It's how are we going to figure out an issue that's raised in the community? Coal Creek Golf, you know, is something that I was able to discover slightly after I left council, frankly. I'd always wanted to play in, in, at the golf course a lot, but Tuesday nights were, were taken up by being on council. And I dove into it in 2008 afterwards. There's a special community at Coal Creek Golf Course. There are a lot of people that play at Coal Creek because of the community there. The men's club is what I can speak to directly, even though many people prefer the design of other courses. They play Coal Creek because of that camaraderie, and that's an important thing. This decision, or where we are right now, can impact that community signific, significantly. I've heard a lot of people who are longtime stalwarts in that community who are questioning whether they want to continue. I understand that the economics have changed. Not sure how deep council was in understanding, you know, the, the significant changes to the pricing structure, but it seems that a pause to reconsider that is in order, in order to make sure that if the economics have changed that significantly, then we can communicate that to the community. I think that's my contribution. Thank you. That's what I want to say. Appreciate your work. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Don.
That's it.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for the comments. And do we have any others on any other subject whatsoever? Okay, good. You're welcome to stay. I invite you to do that, but you don't have to. You're welcome to make public comment on other matters that we're about to discuss as well. And we also, I guess, I'll, I'll reach out and just say that if you have materials that you've been referring to and would like to submit them, please do. They'll get submitted to us, and we can take a look at them as well.
If you're not in a huge rush, the next item is celebrating our chief of, fire chief for his long career. So, you know, if you're not in a huge rush, you can stick around.
Good, good point. It's not quite the next, but it's pretty close. Do we have a motion concerning the consent agenda? Yes. Councilmember Cooperman.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, but that we move item E to the regular agenda at the end so that I can suggest interviewing a few more candidates that are currently listed.
Any opposed? Okay. We will move item 6E then to item 9D at the tail end of the meeting. All right, good. And I think, did you move for passage of the entire consent? Okay, good. We're good then. Next is council informational comments and committee reports. Do council members have such comments or reports? Yes. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. I just wanted to make a public comment expressing my extreme condolences to the family, the kids, and the fiance, Matt Gueray, of Faith Winter. So, Senator Faith Winter has been serving the state of Colorado since 2015 as a state representative, and then since 2019 as a senator. She has entered and supported bills ranging from employment practices, high school apprenticeships, reduced testing burdens, transportation, and energy. She has accomplished a lot at the Capitol, and she will be sorely missed. If you're interested, there will be a memorial service for Faith to be held at 2:00 PM Friday on the west steps of the Colorado Capitol. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Other, yes, go ahead. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it has been brought to our attention that there's been an increasing number of what I would characterize as disrespectful behavior towards Lewisville city staff in various departments. So much so that I feel compelled to take a moment before we proceed with the remainder of our meeting tonight to comment on the matter. First and foremost, I want to start by stating that I believe we're all on the same team. And in the end, I think we all want what's great for Lewisville. To that end, you know, with the work we're doing, despite our best intent, we're going to miss the mark at times. There will be disagreements along the way. That's to be expected. But I think it's important for us all, including us on the dais and everyone in the community as a whole, to assume good intentions, show up with curiosity to learn and find solutions rather than attacking the person. Lewisville's a special place. We have phenomenal staff, period. And we will continue to accomplish great things in this community if we all commit to showing up as the best version of ourselves, engaging in a productive dialogue, and being respectful of one another. Let's do great things together. Thank you.
Thanks. Other council members' comments or reports? Okay. Thanks for those. Next is the city manager's report.
I will make it short. I'm excited about the parade of lights this Friday evening and the other events at the museum and library. And also, I don't know if it's on tonight, but if you look out the window, the empire sign is lit up.
Oh.
Yes. So, and I, my understanding is there's a pop-up that's open there. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. On to first item of regular business, which is a proclamation honoring retiring Lewisville Fire Protection District Chief John Wilson, who we invite to come forward to the dais. That's exactly where you need to be. And I want to read the proclamation. We'll ask for a motion and a voice vote, and then we will do a presentation after that. All right. You ready? All right. Whereas Chief John Wilson began his fire service career as a college student in Moscow, Idaho, and went on to serve in the Eagle River Fire Department, the East Grand Fire Protection District, and the West Monroe Fire District before bringing his expertise and leadership to the city of Lewisville. And whereas Chief Wilson began his tenure with the Lewisville Fire Protection District on December 5, 2011, as a battalion chief, and through his dedication and exemplary service, was promoted to fire chief on January 2, 2015. And whereas on December 30, 2021, Chief Wilson led the department's response to the Marshall Fire, the most destructive wildfire in Colorado state history, demonstrating extraordinary leadership, calm under pressure, and deep commitment to protecting lives and property during a time of unprecedented crisis. And whereas Chief Wilson prioritized community engagement and public education, launching proactive initiatives such as personalized house calls to residents during which he provided fire wildfire safety training, distributed specialized gear, and empowered families with tools and knowledge to protect their homes and loved ones. And whereas Chief Wilson's leadership has left a lasting legacy of community connection, strengthening not only the Lewisville Fire Protection District, but the entire city of Lewisville. And whereas the city council, city staff, and residents extend their deepest gratitude to Chief John Wilson for his years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his well-earned retirement. Now, therefore, the city of, the city council of Lewisville, Colorado, does hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation and recognition of Chief John Wilson for his outstanding leadership, service, and contributions to the safety and well-being of our community dated the second day of December 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Can I get a voice vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I guess what I would suggest, if we can all go down to where you are, or have him... Oh, yeah. Well, I was going to give him that and then have him say something, but you're right. He ought to sing for his supper. Chief, what, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Not maybe words of wisdom, but a couple of items. I didn't think about this until I started approaching here, and you brought it up. So, I'll, I'll take the, the time to, to say a couple of items. It, it's not one person that makes the fire district. It's all my staff. It's all the volunteers. It's the past members that have been along with the city of Lewisville for a very long time. And so, that's the reason why we do as, as well as we do. It's the staff. It's the council members. It's the city manager. It's everyone that I work with here in the city that made my job a lot easier. I'm very honored to be your fire chief up for another 30 days. And I, I do, I just, I really appreciate all the kindness that everyone has shown my, my way, even on hard days like the 30th of December to other days that we lose someone from our city that we could have maybe saved, but lost them anyway. So, thank you very much for everyone. And we can kind of gather and take a picture real quick, I guess.
Before, before we do that, I actually left one part out, which is, I'd like to allow any of my fellow council members to say any words that they want to. Yes.
Thanks. I just wanted to say thank you from myself and the entire Marshall Fire community for all the work you've done, but protecting our community for so many years. We'll definitely miss you. You've left an amazing legacy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just taken by your kindness every time I've ever, ever seen you in any situation. Like, you're, you are just so approachable and loving and caring about the community and the people around you, and just a great personality to have had in our community for so long. So, thank you for the way in which you served.
Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Fahy.
I'll reiterate what's already been said and add that the other thing that I've experienced that is wonderful about you is your sense of humor. Because no matter what's going on, you can make it funny somehow. And thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead. Councilmember Hamilton.
Words can't even begin to express my gratitude to your work in the community. It's amazing how you show up every day with that smile on your face, and it just brings light to our community despite how hard your work is. So, very much appreciated how you show up every day. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just add one note. I've, I've sort of noticed that, you know, maybe more so since the Marshall Fire, you've seemed more willing to come and advocate before city council, and I've really appreciated that in particular.
I don't think Councilmember Hefner is on, Councilmember Hefner is a little under the weather. Yeah. He did?
He copped up.
Yeah, okay. Two things. One, happy, another one very serious. I really appreciate your letting me ride in your bucket truck at the parade of lights your year.
It's Friday.
Absolutely. And I'll be there, and so will my wife, who constantly says how much she appreciates it too. It's wonderful that we do that and that you have both of your trucks out there. On the more serious note, I, I wanted to kind of think back to that first council meeting that we had after the Marshall Fire, which was a really difficult experience for the community generally. I'm sure it was one of the most well-attended of any meeting we ever had on Zoom or otherwise, and it was on Zoom. I wish, you know, that we had been able to get all together because it's one of those times where being physically in the same place could be a really good thing. But it was hard for council too, and I remember how hard it was for you. And I remember your apologizing at that meeting, and I remember feeling like there's nothing in the world that you have to apologize for. We saw incredible acts of heroism and duty and resilience in the face of horrible catastrophe. When I went out with the mayor, Mayor Stolzmann, two days later, I, we looked around and she said, oh, my gosh. And I, we drove around all the burn areas, and she said that. And I said, what, what do you mean? What, what's going on? And she said, those, those fire hoses, they're right in the middle of the street. They're, firefighters dropped them and ran. That's what happened there. And so, I want to tell you from the bottom of my own heart how much I and all of the members of council then and now, and the whole community, and I'm sure the fire survivors, appreciate what you were going through at that time and the leadership and resolve that you exercised. And since then, have helped us all to recover from that and to be better at, at trying to make sure as much as we can that this doesn't happen again. And if, God forbid, it does, we're in better shape to deal with it. We're a better community because of you.
Thank you.
So, thanks a lot.
Thanks. Appreciate that. I gave you each a coin too, and my name's on, on the back of it or on one side, so...
Tell us about that.
It's a challenge coin. Made... Made, really kinda created during the military, but first responders kinda carried it over too. It's just to celebrate either the district, or the Fire Department, or a specific event. This will be celebrating my event at the end of the year, so.
Good. And that one, I gather we can make fun of you and all kinds of other things?
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
We won't do that. Maybe, why don't, why don't we go ahead and all form right in front of the diocese and you, we're going to present to you. Okay. The next item on business is ordinance number 1911, series 2025, and ordinance amending chapter 2.12 of the Lewisville Municipal Code concerning the salary of the presiding municipal judge. It's first reading and to set the public hearing. Tonight, we'll be hearing staff report for the ordinance. We will not be opening a public hearing or taking, taking public comment. Council can ask questions and suggest amendments to the extent that they want to for second reading, and they can also instruct staff to return with additional information. So I think our clerk is prepared to deliver the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jenny Klein, Lewisville City Clerk. I do not have a presentation this evening, but I am available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any question about the draft? Okay. Thank you. Sounds like we don't have any questions. Any comments that anybody has? Okay. Why don't we take, get a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1911, series 2025, and ordinance amending chapter 2.12 of the Lewisville Municipal Code concerning the salary of the presiding municipal judge. First reading and set the public hearing for December 16, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is discussion, direction, and action. Tressle Strategy Group Affordable Housing Strategic Framework Work Session. And I guess we asked for the staff report, which as I understand it, is actually gonna be delivered by, not staff, but Danica.
Are you introing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just do a really quick, I'll do a really quick intro and turn it over to Danica, but as you all know, we're working with Danica and Tressle Strategy Group to develop a strategic framework for evaluating how we can better invest in affordable housing. So this is the first of a two-step process where Danica's engaging with city council to help develop those strategies and get city council input as we move along through the project. I'll turn it over to Danica.
And welcome.
Thank you. It's good to see you. My name's Danica Powell. I am with Tressle Strategy Group. I've been here before. I've done some consulting for the city of Lewisville. My firm is based in Boulder, and I do a variety of different kind of complex real estate strategy and entitlements, as well as community engagement, and work on affordable housing. So I'm here to talk about affordable housing specifically and the, the funding that you've set aside, and really, this is a conversation. I prepared, the presentation is what was in your packet, so if you have a chance to review it, it's pretty dense with information. I hope we can have a discussion so that you can give me, myself and Rob, some direction on where to take this. The scope is of, it will evolve based on the feedback we get from you tonight. So the purpose of this was to evaluate and prioritize housing funding strategies to maximize impact, align with community goals, and respond to the critical community need for affordable and attainable housing. Just a little background on this, as, as you well know, you set aside $2 million in affordable housing funding in a, what we call Opportunity Fund, and you also will have, have some money set aside through inclusionary housing and potentially more with future projects. So this is, you're kind of a new, or, or this is a new to the organization, so without having a housing division and a large framework, we're trying to figure it out, and hopefully I can bring some of my insight and the insight I gained from talking to many people, developers, and others in the community. So the goal of this work is to build awareness and transparency. I think a lot of the conversations I've had are, are really just building awareness that there is this funding, that Lewisville does take affordable housing seriously, that it is a priority. I think that is, you know, a shift in policy, and I think that is really great to get that word out into the community, highlight best practices, learning from what other communities are doing and what developers are seeing as ways towards successful projects. We're hoping to surface some viable projects during this process by talking to folks out in the community, brokers, developers, landowners, et cetera. Also, explore additional funding sources, and how do we match those up and leverage those to the best ability. $2 million is, is quite a bit of money, but it doesn't go very far in the affordable housing world, unfortunately, so it definitely needs to be leveraged with other funding sources, and those are available. And then establish strategic relationships, so building partnerships, and hopefully facilitate future collaborations for the city of Lewisville. After I'm gone, I hope that I've hopefully built some bridges for you in the community so that you have more opportunities to do affordable housing, and then provide case studies of what, what works and what, what doesn't work. So this first step is really just looking at just different types of strategies. I broke, I really brought forward four, but again, this is a discussion, so we can, feel free to ask me about anything, but I really tried to kind of bring forward four different strategies that probably could have the most impact in the community and came up the most in the conversations that I had. And so then, through that, we're starting to build a frame, framework, a ranking prioritization. It, it's not apples to apples, you know, there's not, you can't say this is better, so what I'm really hoping to get is, you know, we really wanna see more of this, or we really, our, our first and top priority is for sale, middle-income housing, and that's what we wanna do, and, or, you know, we really need rentals for below 30% AMI. I had quite a few conversations here while we were waiting with several folks in the community who are, who qualify themselves as seniors, and, you know, they were, they're really talking about their housing needs and, and be able to step down housing. And so I think it's, it's all on the table. And then after this, with the feedback that you bring to me, I, we wanna start looking at real sites. Look, maybe bring forward a few opportunities, explore partnership, and really hopefully bring something to the real world that might emerge out of this discussion and this scope of work. So do you have any questions on the scope of work? Okay. So I'm briefly, this is your housing assessment. I did not conduct it. You're probably familiar with it, but just for reference, there are three goals, increasing residential development opportunities in Lewisville. This is something I spent a lot of time talking about, like what that means for the community and to developers who are thinking about investing in this community. Expand and maintain access to affordable housing, so leveraging that funding and figuring out a toolbox for solutions, and then diversifying the housing stock. And I know that in my conversations with Rob, that you're working on a lot of the zoning and regulatory actions that were identified in that housing plan is key strategies. So those were things I also heard from the community when I spoke with them. Just from the housing study, there's a, by 2047, you need about 200, 2,500 housing units. I, I thought this chart was really interesting on what the need and underproduction is, so it really is showing the lower AMIs. And once you get into, especially in rental projects, once you get into 80, 90, 100% AMI, the market's doing a good job delivering that. So, you know, when we start talking, really understanding the difference between for sale and for rent, and what a for rent project really drives against that under 60% AMI and a for sale project, how we can get to that middle 100, 120% AMI, and the amount of subsidy that's required to do that is significant. So this is just more data. I wanted to put it in here for context. I think you're well aware, 100% AMI in this study was $144,000 a year for a family of four. And these are some examples of what a for sale, a monthly rent for that family would be $1,855, and a sales price would be $432 to $504. So again, we can see, I think, just if we're attuned to the market, we probably know, I could probably go find a rental for $2,000 a month, but finding a house to buy for $432,000 is probably impossible. So we, we start to see that real disparity in that 100% AMI bracket. So as part of this, I, you know, kind of tapped into my role at X and, and really talked to as many people as I could that led me to talk to others. So I talked to for-profit affordable housing developers, so happy to talk about the difference of what a nonprofit affordable housing developer is, and, and those are typically your housing authorities, or, or groups like Thistle, or Habitat for Humanity, or nonprofit. We actually have a lot of affordable housing developers that are for-profit, that are producing a lot of affordable housing in our community. And so, whoops, my hands too much. So their, their perspective is important, market rate housing developers as well, because they're the ones, if they're building, you know, actually, one of the conversations I had is more housing meets more housing. So the more housing you build, the more inventory you create, the more inclusionary housing you create, the more opportunity you have for that step-down movement, and so your market rate housing developers are very important, that they're investing money in development in this community. Also, li-tech, which is low-income housing tax credits. I spoke with First Bank. I've done a tax credit deal with them. They have local, soon to not be local, First Bank in Lewisville, but they do a lot of tax credit investment, and they, and I think it's PNC, PMC, remember the new bank that bought First Bank, but they will continue to be doing tax credit investment in the community. And then land brokers, looking at sites that, you know, everyone kind of points, "Oh, look at that site," or "What about that site?" So trying to talk to those people that might have property for sale, or might be looking for property for sale, and so kind of dipping into that market. So the key takeaways, the barriers, what I heard from speaking with people in Lewisville through this process, and, and, you know, before that, impact fees are high. The cost of doing entitlements and impact fees are high. There's funding uncertainty. So there is affordable housing tax, I think it was 1B that was passed by the county, it's a sales tax, and has been collected, and there's just uncertainty about how that money is allocated, who gets to make the decisions, where it's going, what the priorities are. So while there's been funding, local funding sources, there's still uncertainty about who gets that money, and why, and how. So it's not just happening here at, at the local level, it's happening at the county level. Land prices are very high, and, and what I looked at is that the, the asking prices aren't necessarily in alignment with the risk that, that a developer would have to take to go under contract and probably rezone a property, take it through a PUD, and, you know, be at risk for a couple years. And so the price seems to reflect what the, the outcome would be if the property was upzoned and entitled, and so there's just an imbalance on what I think people think their land is worth, because it's still zoned, very low-density residential. So a lot of these properties do require rezoning in a PUD, which is a risky process. It's, I, I call these entitlements, this is what I do a lot of, and so they, they take a lot of time and money and risk, and that, that removes a lot of local developers. Sometimes they just aren't willing to take on that kind of level of risk. I think another thing that I really came clear is that Lewisville does not have a housing authority. You're not a housing authority, you don't have really a housing staff. I'm working with Rob, who's really smart and great, but the resources internal aren't great, and, you know, we have Boulder County Housing Authority, who's also gone through a lot of changes in terms of their housing staff. So there's not a lot of, like, muscle power to be able to put deals together from the municipal and local level. So that, that is a barrier, I think, and, you know, and I do a lot of work in the city of Boulder, and they have a development review group, and you go and you present exactly what you wanna do, and they figure out how much money you're gonna get, and it's a, it's a structured process. They're collecting millions and millions of dollars in impact, in inclusionary housing fees, and so they have a very sophisticated system, and we're just starting out here. Some funding sources that people are really interested, like Prop 123, require the city to be the lead, so there needs to be a partnership in order to unlock that money, which requires an agreement, oftentimes a public-private partnership, that I think, from my understanding, are new things for the city of Lewisville to be considering. And then ballot measures, I know you're well aware of, but the ballot measures, those are a risk. When you're out in the development community, people are really, when you see something like 300, 301, the people are much less likely to, to take risk or make an investment onto something. So that, you know, obviously, we're past that now, but like Boulder, these keep coming up again and again, and are kind of label a community as a risky investment. So, but there's great opportunities. So there's a lot of funding out there, especially because Lewisville hasn't done a li-tech project in a while, and so when you wanna be competitive, that matters. And so there, and there are a lot of funding sources that are out there, the 123 money, the 1B, the, I actually was just on the county's website, they have an opportunity fund for one-time grants, for pilot projects. So there's, there's quite a bit of capital out there, there's still, you know, tax credits. I think Lewisville can remove the barriers and demonstrate support, lead by example. I heard this a lot, is, "Oh, it's too politically challenging," or "We're not sure they're open for business," and I, so I really think Lewisville can lead by example and say that, you know, really show that housing is important by taking the lead perhaps on a project, or, and you already have done that by setting aside the money. Clearly outline the goals for new development, so put yourself in the driver's seat. If you are a funding partner, you can, you, you can attract the best and the brightest and get what you want. And I'm gonna give you an example of a project I worked in Crested Butte, that's actually under construction now. Property tax exemption is a key funding strategy, so partnering with Boulder County Housing Authority to get their, to work with them as a limited partner to get property tax exemption, that, when you talk to developers and investors, that's a huge funding source, that, you know, exemption goes in their list of sources of funding. I, I mentioned you'd be competitive for tax credits, and you're attractive to affordable housing developers because your market rents are so high, so doing things below that 60, 80% AMI is, it's a very attractive market for a li-tech project. Do you have any questions on that? So I, I talk about de-risking a project. I think, I don't know if this is my term, but it's just, you know, I work on a lot of really risky entitlements. So the idea is that you take on some of the risk, whether that's with your money or with your resources, to really get a project ready and queued up to the development community. And that could mean land control, that could mean, you know, doing due diligence, getting preliminary entitlements, getting, you know, taking it through some of the preliminary entitlement work as the city, as the lead, doing the community outreach, as we know, community can kill projects, especially affordable housing projects. Understanding the infrastructure and cost estimates, so having a clear pro forma that you can present to a developer and, and help them understand what the real costs of the project are. So you create an outcomes-based development with less risk. So in this scenario, the city could identify funding sources, do appraisals, utility analysis, cost estimates, and infrastructure requirements, identify the incentives that they could put in the, on the table. in the, on the table, do the preliminary design, build that community support. I'll talk about this with an example, but this is, actually, you could put your money towards identifying land and bringing a property to the development market instead of waiting for somebody to come to you and not knowing what you're going to get out of it. With an understanding of the above, Lewisville could package an RFP to developers, clearly outcome, in the outcomes they expect, how many units they want, what they want it for rent, for sale, AMIs. And having a realistic project cost, we would know if it would pencil or not, how long it would take. So that way, you're going to attract a higher caliber of developer who understands exactly what risk they have to take, understand the timeline and costs. This can raise the bar on who could respond, which will lead to a better outcome, and you have a seat at the table. Now, this does require resources, and so I'm going to talk about, a little bit more about what that could mean, just as an example. So this project is in Gunnison County. I worked for the county as a consultant to them, to help them, I actually helped build a team, and we brought the, we did all the community outreach, we did the preliminary design, we took it through Sketch Plan, which was their first preliminary entitlements with the county commissioners. And we then, once we had these really foundational elements in place, then we went out to an RFP and selected a developer, and they brought their own design and engineering team, and with a real solid understanding of what could be built, and a lot of the risks removed, the project actually proceeded very quickly. It's under construction now. And if you've been up to Crested Butte, it's really exciting to see 250 workforce units being built. It's in the county, but it's actually, we're getting utilities from Crested Butte. It's right outside Crested Butte. So what was interesting is I talked about this project with Gunnison County at the State Housing Conference, Affordable Housing Conference in Keystone. And what their, the theme was that they had went from failure into foundations, because when they, they had another piece of property right across the street called Brush Creek, they owned, had multiple partners on, and they went right out to get a developer. And it spectacularly blew up, because the developer didn't know the community, didn't really take the right steps with the neighbors, didn't have, I think, alignment with the community vision. And so that project, Brush Creek, just basically kind of imploded. And so the county took a big step back and said, what can we do differently? And so they bought this property, Wetstone, and really came at it with this other approach that I'm talking about, which was really taking on that risk themselves, getting it ready, and really, you know, clearly outlining what they wanted from a developer. So it's an interest, it was a great panel to be on with my clients, and happy to put you in touch with them if you're interested. It was a very challenging project, but I'm happy to say it's under construction, and I can't say that about some of the many other affordable housing projects I've worked on. A lot of this was working with the community, and I can't underestimate how important community outreach is and building community support before you even put pencil to paper. So we did a two-day charrette with the community, we co-created, we actually paid community members who were taking time off work a stipend to participate. And so here we talk about the de-risking. So the county took on a lot of that cost and risk on the entitlements before bringing on the development partner. They also had a very simple financing solution, which is really interesting, and I don't, not something we need to go into, but it was, had a very simple solution, which helped make that project less risky, because it didn't rely on 15 different sources of funding that can go away or change over time. So these are the four strategies I want to talk about. The public-private partnership with developer for land acquisition, buying down of existing or newly developed units, pre-development of a site to de-risk the project and then find the developer. So that's what I've kind of been talking about, because I just wanted to explain it as well as I could. And then just administrative review and fee waivers. That comes up a lot as a solution, but as you'll see, it's not the end-all solution. I put this note in here because I personally made these, you're going to see red, yellow, green, we could debate them, they're prob, I just, it's for discussion purposes only. I'm happy to debate them, that was the point. So there's, there's a lot of nuance in how you can think about this. So this public-private partnership, that would mean you would work with a developer on land acquisition, and really, that's it, like, working towards getting the land control and getting the property, but you, you know, it's an early move, and you can use that funding, but you don't have kind of that, you haven't removed the risk or really understood what that property is capable of. But, so the scale of impact is medium. There are, without other funding sources and tax credits, we don't know what the project outcome will be, because early on, if you're investing first in with the money, everyone wants to be last in with money. So when you're first in, you don't know where the other money's coming from, so there's still risk. You can have a high depth of affordability, because you compare this with all these funding sources that I talk about, that this really work, and this is for, at the very bottom, I said, an outcome would be rental. This is most likely, especially with these funding sources, a rental project. It has a medium risk profile, because you would still require entitlements and would be subject to a risky process for competitive funding. Tax credits are competitive, even the 4%, and so you won't know, and sometimes you have to wait one or two rounds to get that funding. Partnering with a developer early on would preclude a competitive process. So if somebody brings you a deal and you respond to that deal versus you saying, here's the deal, you tell us what you, how, kind of creating a beauty contest. The scale of impact could be high. Early investment can drive a larger-scale project, especially if you took a significant portion of that funding towards land and paired it with some other funding, you could probably, you know, have a higher level of impact with more units. Sustainability, so this is having a lasting impact as well as not requiring ongoing city funding or staffing. And this is a very nuanced category, because again, in the Wetstone example, the county's going to manage the units and create a revolving fund that then they use, then that money, that operating income, they can invest in another project, and then a bigger project and a bigger, and they're going to have, they call it generational impact, because in 30, 40 years from now, that fund will be $100 million. And so that isn't how Lewisville is operating, because you don't have that housing staff. So it's like, how is this sustainable? So staff would have to also be involved in a development agreement. You would want the developer, the developer would build, own, and manage the units. In talking to groups that do very low-income housing, under 30% and permanently supportive housing, ongoing investment is also often needed from the local community for services. You can't, you can't build housing that's under 30% AMI without bringing a lot of services to that housing. And this could have medium funding leverage, because, like I said, you're first in with the money, we don't know who else is committed yet, but I rated it medium. Do you have a question? Or, no, you're just listening, okay. Happy to talk through that idea. Please interrupt me. So buying down of existing or newly developed units. So this is, this is, you know, again, I spoke to Kurt Fernhamers, Director of Housing and Human Services, and they actually are doing a lot of programs with the county that I didn't bring into this discussion, but they're actually buying down units in Lafayette, and I think they have an agreement with Long, or Lewisville, to actually go in and buy down either existing units, put in 20, 25 grand, kind of, you know, zhuzh them up, and then sell them, bring that sales price down. And it requires about a subsidy, about $140,000 to $150,000. So that subsidy is greater for a for-sale unit, but you're getting a for-sale unit that's deed restricted in that middle income. Also newly developed units, units that Habitat might be building, or Thistle, being able to take additional funding on top of their funding and bring down that sales price a little bit more. So this is a strategy that works especially for for-sale units. Buying a condo that might be 40 years old and putting a little bit of money in it, and then reselling it for a price, that subsidy that you put into it can bring that sales price down. So this is really likely in a for-sale process. The, the risk and feasibility is low, because they're already, somebody else is already building, and they're either built, and you're just working with an agent to buy the unit, or you're, somebody's saying, I'm going to have 10 units finished in 2027, and you're not really involved in anything. So that has, it has more bang for the buck that way, it's just a higher subsidy. We would acquire the higher subsidy, likely resulting in less units, but you would help subsidize a middle-income for-sale product. Again, sustainability, having an elastic impact. The way the city program works in Boulder, that they have an agreement with Lewisville and Lafayette, is that those are permanently deed restricted, so when that unit becomes for sale, again, the city staff would work with the seller to find a buyer that qualifies, so that that unit stays in a permanently deed-restricted for-sale market forever. The downside that I know we all also hear about is that the increase in equity that that homeowner makes is often capped at about 3%, so that has its downside as well. And sometimes people are just less likely to buy a unit in this price range. You have to be very careful with the market, because they might just say, you know, I don't want a deed restriction, I'm just going to, you know, drive 10 miles east and not have to worry about that. So it's a delicate balance of what the market can sustain and what people are willing to do to take on a deed restriction. And so funding leverage, this is, probably doesn't have any other funding sources, it's probably a one-time per-unit investment. This is the third option, which is de-risking. This really looks like, I mentioned the Wetstone example, you will put, the city would, you would actually take some of this money and put it more into soft cost, and really maybe land acquisition or land carry, hiring consultants, and getting that project rezoned, entitled, figure out the infrastructure, and get some of that, maybe get that PUD approved, so that entitlement risk is out of the way, and then going to market with an RFP or an offering and seeing who and what, kind of, the best and highest developer that you can attract, because you really put the sweat kind of equity into the project. You can create certain outcomes and create a competition for the best approach and results from a developer. Instead of them telling you what they can do or promising what they can do, you can tell them what you know they can do, and they can, you know, up the ante, or, you know, say that they can meet that, and, you know, really hoping to remove kind of the renegotiation that can happen when you go out for, I've seen it, this happened a lot of times, you put out a property for an RFP that doesn't have a lot of information on it, and you will attract, a developer will say, I can do this, 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 and this, and it's all going to be great, and then you go under agreement with them, and they, things start getting renegotiated. And it happens all the time. And I'm not saying, there's lots of great developers, and there's lots of developers, or they, they don't know what they're getting into, because we haven't figured out all of the risks. Sustainability, I think this is what's really interesting, and I wanted to get your feedback. It would require more staff resources. I think in the case of Gunnison County, we did work very closely with the county planning director and the city manager's office, and really, you know, while we were consultants, they were still managing us, and so it took time and resources. It's, it's not a, it does require quite a bit of oversight, and especially with the community engagement, and really being attentive to the politics and the entitlements. With the city as a lead, though, you have higher funding leverage. You can unlock more funding sources, more grants, and more opportunity. I think this could be rental and for sale. I think I've, you know, in talking to developers, this could work in both scenarios. Of course, you're going to get more units in a rental project at lower AMIs, but you could still think about a for-sale project, I think, with this type of scenario. And then the last example that I just wanted to bring forward tonight is just administrative review, expedited process, fee waivers. I think this gets thrown around a lot, is, you know, let's remove, and I think it's very, very important, don't get me wrong. I think it's expensive to go through entitlements and pay all your designers and engineers without, you know, knowing the outcome. Fees are expensive, time is money, and so creating administrative process is really important. I went at the housing conference, I met a housing planner for Denver, and her, she actually used to work for Boulder. Her only job is to review affordable housing projects, that's it. Denver's a big city, so they have a lot of them, but she, they stay in the top of the queue, they don't get put in with the rest of the projects, they come in in a separate, like, I imagine, like, this, you know, office of yes, like, they come in, I'm an affordable housing project, they get one person looking at it, and they get priority on everything. And so that kind of thing can make a huge difference of people taking on risk or bringing forward projects. And it doesn't, I don't necessarily think it has to be 100% affordable. It could be 30% affordable. It could be, it could meet a metric that you want to see. It could be middle, mid-size housing, that's, you know, less than 1,500 square feet, but it's in a, in a kind of first-time home buyer, you know, there's lots of ways I think you can think about this without always thinking about AMIs. The depth of affordability, you're not going to get a deed restriction for this. Nobody's going to give you a permanent deed restriction for a $50,000 waiver of fees or tap fees. That, that investment would have to be higher, so I think this really needs to be paired with something else. I don't think you're going to, waiving fees isn't going to get you, somebody willing to say, I'm not going to, I'm going to profit this much less on the project. But it does really have a high value in the risk, feasibility, and timeline. It removes opportunity for NIMBY action, which, as we all know, can really create a lot of barriers to affordable housing. I worked in lines after the flood, and, you know, we had $29 million in funding, we had a site, we had the design, we had the approvals. It got put up to referendum, and it didn't pass by a handful of votes. My story is, I think, they, a lot of the people that were displaced got moved out of the community and didn't keep a PO box and weren't able to vote in their own election, which was really heartbreaking. But those ballot initiatives, and honestly, that's why we looked at annexing into Crested Butte, or staying in Gunnison because of the utility situation. And my advice was staying Gunny, because you have a much larger voting, you know, Crested Butte is a lot of out-of-state homeowners who don't like development. And so, you know, really understanding the risk of what a ballot initiative can do in the NIMBY action, what that can do to drive away affordable housing or stop affordable housing development. Scale of impact, medium. You won't guarantee the deed restrictions or affordability, but you will help facilitate more housing being built. I think the, this can take less staff time if it's an administrative review versus having to take a project through lengthy public hearings and multiple public process, that takes a lot of staff resources and time. And not a lot of funding that could be paired with this, but this could be paired with the other three examples that I mentioned. So that's kind of the end of this. I wanted you, I'd love to hear your feedback, so that I could get some direction. Here's some, are we better off subsidizing property or subsidizing fees? How do you feel about being proactive, waiting or waiting for someone to come to you? What is your experience or your feedback? And if being proactive is a preferred strategy, what, what does that look like as you sit here on council? So, or you can talk about anything else you want, or ask me questions.
Why don't we start with questions on the presentation, if there are any of those? First Barbara, and then Councilmember Cooperman.
Thank you. Phenomenal presentation. Clearly, you've put a lot of thought into this and what it means specifically for Lewisville. You know, as you walked through those four different strategies, one of the things that kept popping up into my mind is the, the resources or needed here, not just financially, but thinking of like, people, you know, resources. And we don't have a housing authority in Lewisville specifically. What role, if any, would Boulder County Housing Authority play in those strategies? Is there anything we could leverage there with their people and resources and processes to be successful with any of those strategies?
So that's a really good question. I have worked with the housing authority. I also, I actually worked on the regional housing partnership, of which you're a member of, this goal of, I think, 12% affordable housing. of, this goal of I think 12% affordable housing by 2035. I worked on the Home Wanted campaign. I will say that the, I am working on getting a meeting with the county. Their housing division is not as robust as it once was from a resource standpoint is my understanding. And so they're not actively doing development. I mean, they're work, they're finishing Willoughby Corner and that's, I mean, it was a huge project and an incredible amount of units. I heard that that project alone brought Lafayette just through the roof on their, I think they got them to 12%. So, but they, I heard that they went out to RFP to find a development partner to help them develop some of their property. So I don't, I'm trying to get to the like bottom of that, but I don't think at this moment, there's a lot of staff resources to do projects in Louisville. I think that the opportunity, again, without having talked to them, but having talked to developers who have, are partnering with them, is bringing them in as this tax exemption limited partner, that property tax exemption that I talked about and helping, you know, as a funding source. But I don't really, I don't know if you have any insight onto Boulder County Housing Authority and their, their staffing resources.
No, I, I do think that, you know, they're, they're doing their best with what they have right now from a staffing standpoint. There's some transition, it seems like. We meet with them regularly and talk about opportunities, but I think what they've expressed to us is they, they do have limited resources and they, we are working with them on other potential future projects, not related to what we're talking about tonight. So, you know, we can continue to have, I think we'll continue to have discussions and outside of the tax exemption that they could potentially provide for a project, we'll continue to explore opportunities with them when, as, as they have resources available. They, they kind of think a few years in advance and instead of something more immediate like we're looking at now.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, I think there's more information on the, what the, and I, I, I didn't actually have a chance to talk to you, Rob, about this, but what Kurt Fernheber told me is that there, I think there is an MOU with the city of Boulder and you're, where they, they can manage some of this for sale. So that is a real opportunity because they do have the staff and I think they have the funding, I believe, from the county now or the state to actually fund those staff members to help do this kind of buying the condos and flipping them and doing this buy down idea. So there's, there's resources on that. I just, I don't, I didn't hear anything about there being recent development, developer type resources anywhere. And so that's where you have to really lean into your developer community, I think, and find a good development partner if that's something you want to do. Someone who has experience working with jurisdictions and understands what a public-private partnership looks like. And then, you know, I don't know what the city of Louisville's resources are. I think in that Whitestone example, we, you know, they use funding to pay, they, they brought my firm on and I brought, actually Willa Williford, who lives up there. She's, she used to be at the Boulder County Housing Authority and others, but she lives in Crested Butte. Then we brought an architect on and engineer. So we built our own little kind of development team to really help the county get to that point. And so that, that is an idea that would, you would have to use probably some of that funding for. So it's really using it for soft cost to get to a better or bigger outcome versus just saying, hey, we're gonna go buy $2 million, buy four units and, you know, bring those units down and, and, you know, buy, do this kind of condo program, resale program. You might get, I don't know, maybe four or five, I didn't really do the math, four or five units versus 250 units, you know? What, what is, what's the scale that you're, and 250 is probably too big for Louisville, but, and their demand is through the roof. Those units are renting, I think the rents are gonna be like 180, 100, probably 120 to 100, 200% AMI because it's Crested Butte and they're just out of housing options. And you guys aren't there yet.
That's really helpful. I mean, the reason why I asked the question is not only for the front-end development staffing needs, but also looking on the back end, once a project is completed, you know, some of the strategies that you outlined for us tonight included potentially ongoing staffing resources that would be needed. So I was thinking about it from, from both ends of that soup to nut process. Thank you both.
Yeah, and I think the options, that's where I did that, my rating is the ones that took the least amount of staff resources. So you're not managing units and doing income qualification. And I mean, there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with this and like I mentioned, the services. So those are things that you can outsource and that they are also things that a development partner will bring. They're, you know, they're often have their own property management company that's used to the, to the, the income qualification piece of this.
A few questions. One, when you were getting feedback from various developers and other stakeholders and you heard that impact fees are high, did they single out any particular fees? I was curious.
I, no, I can't actually recall. I think it's just, you know, and there's, sometimes there's just these general statements that it's expensive to do business here. And I think I'm, one of the things I want to try and do is like really understand that and maybe change some of that perception. I think that I would say maybe the tap fees or I don't know, I don't actually know your fee structure. It's probably, and it's probably just more of the time that it takes to get through something. You're paying, you're either holding that land and paying the carrying costs. So it's not just impact fees. I think it's just the getting through it. If it takes a year, there's, there's a lot of costs that, that get absorbed. I don't know, Rob, have you had, you know the fees.
Yeah, so, so our development impact, impact fees specifically, which we're going to be updating next year, you know, one of the things we'll do is compare to other communities. When we last updated them about six or seven years ago or so, that was a big part of the process was where do we lie within other communities? And we weren't creating impact fees where we were, you know, on the upper range compared to other communities. So, you know, impact fees, it's all expensive because it's, it's additional cost for the developer.
Yeah. That's fine. Sorry.
And I'm happy to dig into that more. I think, you know, again, I've done some work in Boulder where I, I figured a few years ago, it's probably about 50, 60,000 unit just off the top for inclusionary, their inclusionary housing, their, they call them public improvement fees. And, you know, they don't waive any fees. I, you know, I would recommend Boulder do the same. But, you know, it's just what is, what is it that you're getting and what's, you know, what, what, they have a 25% inclusionary housing. You guys have 12%, I believe. So, and it's 36% if you go above three stories. So they're kind of veering into like it's getting too expensive to develop. And I don't, I think I'd like to unpack more what that means by impact fees. Yeah.
Okay. And I was wondering, could you just briefly describe how this property tax exemption works?
So not, I'm not an expert, but I would understand as you would sign an agreement with the housing authority. I think they take a fee for that exemption, I believe, and they would become a limited partner, a very small partner in the project, maybe two, I don't know, some small percentage. And so that exemption, they can, I know, I know Fort Collins actually, like their housing authority will basically, I think, charge for it. So a developer can come to them and say, I would like your exemption, and then they would pay a fee to have that. You know, there's a bigger set of issues that we're not, I didn't bring up is, you know, what does property tax exemption mean to Louisville and the county? You know, they get most of the taxes. So it's, you know, I think that negotiation is, is, they're losing out more. So I think, but it really makes an impact on the sources of funding for housing, you know, having that exemption. I don't think anyone, unless you're a nonprofit, gets, you know, exemption. Obviously the city doesn't have that property tax exemption. And, and just not to complicate it, but when Lyons, when we were talking about this, there was a concern about losing the fees for police and fire. And so there's, there's workarounds where you can pay pilot and, you know, the school district, you know, so there's, it can get complicated quickly, but it's a solution that is used a lot in the affordable housing world.
Maybe one more question. Are you, some of the, some of the outside funding that you were suggesting is I think from the federal level. Are we seeing any of that disappear at the moment?
Tax credits are safe as far as I understand, and that's the main source of federal, I mean, they're tax credits, but they're coming from the state. I'm not a funding expert, so I, most of those funding sources were state. I do know that 123 funding is going to probably change significantly a year after next because of the state's budget problems. I did hear that a lot at the housing conference, that I think they have another round of funding and maybe one more, and then we may be looking at that funding not being as readily available as it has been because of their budget issues.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, yeah, and that, but the, the local sales tax going to the county is for 15 years, so that is a real source of funding.
Yes, first Councilmember Kern and then Mayor Portem.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you. So I'm curious, you're talking about like, like kind of engaging the community members and getting the information out there. But what I'm interested in is how, like where in this are we like making sure the developers understand the, the changes? I mean, they pay attention, but we're wanting them to like focus now and say, oh, look at this. They're, they're actually engaging, they're talking about it, they're interested in moving forward. The, the entire community overwhelmingly opposed the two most, you know, recent ballot measures. And so I think that that goes a long way to, to talk about that, but I'm just curious, like how, like how do we let the developer know that this is what we're going to do? We can offer different fee reductions or we can, you know, we're, we're interested, they might have ideas for us. So maybe we don't decide, here's the five things we do, but instead we say, we are very open to you telling us what is the, gonna be the best way to get you here and how do we, and how do, like what, we have some money and we have the will of the community to do this. You know, we hear a lot about like, like new, young, young families or young people, you know, out of college and moving here and not being able to afford, they're moving back home with their parents until they're in their 30s because there's just nothing under, you know, like $600,000 in Louisville. People do love townhouses versus apartments. They like ownership, not rental. And so how are we encouraging the developers and to come to us to tell, to talk to Rob and go, if you can get your council to give us these things, we can definitely come in and do it?
I think that's the existential question that I'm here to try and help with. So I, I think this is the start. I think there might be in part two, there might be, maybe we do a forum with developers in the council and really like start building that relationship. I think that the zone, the low density zoning overwhelmingly in Louisville is a real barrier. And so with your comp plan and with looking at TOD and really do you take initiation on the zoning? And I know Rob is talking about this, that would make a huge difference if you, you know, you kind of rezone it and they will come. Because right now, I mean, the site keeps coming up on Main and South Boulder Road. It's right here. It's like, oh, it's right at the, you know, next to a school and next to shopping and next to transit and it's like zone low density residential and the price is really high. And it's like, it's just a really big barrier that nobody's kind of like pulling the string out saying, okay, we can definitely get you 50 units on this property. Then somebody can start running the numbers. Right now, I don't think anyone can run actual numbers on a deal because the zoning is so low that, and the price doesn't reflect a four unit subdivision. And so we're just at odds. I don't know.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, the, it's, I think it's all about the de-risking. I think when I get asked this question, why don't developers, you know, there's fees and this and process, we simply don't have the zoning to support the development. And our comprehensive plan and our small area plans have policies that don't support doing anything other than commercial development in any of the areas. So I think one level of de-risking is at the policy level, which is the comprehensive plan discussion that we're going to be having over the next few months to try to get to that adoption stage. A more significant level of de-risking is actually the city proactively rezoning or, you know, do it, doing something else, which we actually have in our work plan and we have budgeted to work with a consultant to look at our zoning citywide to try to get it in line with whatever our comprehensive plan ends up landing on to. So I think the policy and the actual zoning are really significant elements to change the view of Louisville from the, especially the residential development community.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I even like, what could, you know, how is Louisville open for business? Because I still, I think there's just, there's this, there's also, there's this like legacy of, oh, it's too difficult or they're, they're not open to resident or we don't want multifamily. And I know that's not true, but it's perception. And so I think that's why I kind of also put forward some ideas of you taking the lead in something and showing, leading by example, saying, yeah, this is really important to us. We're gonna take the lead on workforce housing and, you know, working with the community and working with the zoning. So I, I also was in a meeting with Rob, I'm working on the Front Range Passenger Rail projects. We were at a different meeting today and that train is coming in 2029 and hopefully it'll come more. After that, I'm working on the second part, which is to expand the service for Front Range Passenger Rail beyond the three trips per day. You guys have a station in, in your community and you know where it is. It's a huge advantage. A lot of the other, I mean, Boulder knows where, we've already built our whole, so that's an example. Boulder built the Transit Village area. We actually built a whole like giant neighborhood for the train and it never came, but that's Boulder for you. But, you know, other communities along the line are still trying to figure out where their train station's gonna go. You guys know. And that is a huge opportunity, I think. And I know you've already been working on that, but those kinds of things, you know, states made a lot of initiatives along TOD and really embracing that. And also working with the community to help under, like just in my conversations here, you know, start saying affordable housing and, oh, I don't want it here and it needs to be over there. And it's just really starting to talk about who lives in the house, why it's important and what it does. Like again, in my conversation, like, well, if you have a different house to move into, your house becomes available to a young family and like you just start, you know, more inventory does actually have an impact on the pricing. And I don't know, this is, I spent a lot of time on housing policy in Boulder as well. I think really understanding who already lives here that you want to keep. Who are the people that, you know, not just like the in commuters, but like the people that are the seniors, the first time home buyers, the people recently getting divorced, like people who are already in this community. What kind of housing do they want and really asking about that? I know everybody wants a condo that's for sale. We have construction defects and it's really hard to build. Can the city de-risk some of that construction defects litigation? Is there a way to get them, developers, to build for sale attached housing that's stacked? Because nobody is building that anymore and that's literally what people want. That condo that you can, and nobody is building it because it's too expensive and too risky from a liability standpoint. So there's other things. I don't know how you do, I joke, I'm like, can you take out a blanket insurance policy? But really understanding and I think talking to people about the benefits of having more housing in the community is important as well. Because then you can, hopefully you can start removing the stigma of what affordable housing is. I mean, it's beautiful. It's come tour, I mean, well, look at Willoughby Corner, look at all the projects. They, they're actually built to a higher standard sometimes than market housing, so.
That's actually funny. Your last sentence is one of the things I want to talk about. You know, I was talking to a developer recently and they built affordable housing units and one of the things they say is like per square foot, our most expensive development ever in the history of our company is affordable housing units. Like those are the most expensive units to build. So it gets, the system is broken in that like, why, why are we spending more money to build an affordable housing unit than a market unit? And I think part of that is not just like the hammer and the nail, right? It's the process.
It's the lawyers.
Yeah, all the stuff that you have to go through, all the partnering, all those things. And it's like, by the time we're done with this project, the length of time it took and the people that had to get involved, it, it just is a really expensive project. And so, you know, I'm, I'm really, you know, I sort of think of yes and, you know, this like de-risking and also incentives and also, you know, speeding up the process and things that we have as a municipality control over, right? Like that is special about municipalities that we have, we can do those things, we have the expertise. I, I am sensitive to the fact, the concept of, you know, staff time, you know, when that, in that third de-risking is like, okay, well, one of the issues with this is it's, it's a little bit more effort on, on all of us to, to make that happen, but, but it seems like a really good strategy. like a really good strategy. And I think that what I'm hearing from you is it's, you know, it has a potential for more, you say sustainability, but like, sort of repeatability, and I'm curious, you know, to maybe, maybe you can expand a little bit on Whitestone and how, how they're taking one project and actually having that create the next project, having that create the next project, and, and my concern, there's, there was like a fourplex in town, it's like, oh, you can buy that fourplex and spend all of your money doing four units, or is there a way to, you know, use our money, create a project, extract our money back out of that project, and then do it again, and do it again, and do it again? That would be my, my hope, so, you know, I'll be done in a second, you can comment on these. Yeah, similar, the biggest bang for the buck, right, and, and to that same idea, and then, you know, that we do have a bad reputation of people that, like, believe that, you know, our staff is really difficult to work with, and that the council won't approve anything, and that if, if they get through staff and council, then the residents will come out and oppose it, and it's like, okay, no thanks. Like, wait, which version of Lewisville are you talking about? Like, the staff is great, this council's super supportive, our residents just voted down 301, like, I think it's a new world, but until we get through some, we're not building momentum, and so, just thinking about, like, how we get that first project, and what's the best way, if people don't believe us, what's the best way to get that first project done, so that there's a case study, where like, oh, wow, that did go really well, okay, I'm in, right? And that's, that's my concern, is we, we're struggling to get that first project, you know, done.
Yeah. I think that's a really good point, that's why I kind of focused on what I did, is like, how do you put skin in the game? How do you show that you're open for business? How do you, you know, lead by example, I think is all really important. I hope in this second phase, you know, I, I, it's, it's gonna be more real-world focused on maybe some deals or some opportunities, so I think that's the goal, right, is to really hopefully come forward with some, I don't know, case, I'm gonna call them case studies for now, but maybe they're more than that, and it is important, I think it is really, even, it was funny, I told somebody at the City of Lewisville, they're like, oh, you know, they, they don't like housing, and I'm like, that's not true anymore. So there is this lasting, is there a campaign? I, you know, I hear a lot about, I talked about this woman who, in Denver, is there, another planner in Boulder worked in Detroit, she goes, we had an office of yes, like, there was literally a part of their department, it's like, cool things could come in, and there was somebody there to get it done, and it came, it had to come, you know, from the top-down bottom-up, and is that something you want to do? And say, we want it, we want to say yes to cool things, and we're gonna make it, I don't know, with your own branding, but that's literally what Denver's over, did a major overhaul of their planning department for the same reason. They brought back their old planning, not, I love Rob, we're not, Rob's not the issue, but they were, they were experiencing long queues, and everything was taking too long, and so they're just like, we're opening a customer service center, we're gonna guarantee response times, and they just publish it, and they just say what they're gonna do, and the mayor says it, and I don't know if they're doing it. Again, I wish Boulder would do more of that, like, I think that it's really hard, we have the same issue there, it's, the entitlements are way longer, and what do you do? You know, who do you go to when you have something that is great? Can we put something in the process to come to you really early and, and say, you know, and they get a blessing? And I, I don't know, like, that's some things we can explore, because I hear that is a goal, and so, I think that's kind of why I'm here, too, to try and help unpack that and get the tools and the tool belt.
It is about eight fourteen now. I, I think everybody'd like to continue with this discussion, but we may want to take a five-minute break. It's been about 10 hours, and we've been cranking away on this. Is that agreeable? I'd like to take five minutes. Why don't we come back at eight twenty, which is slightly more than five minutes, and we can take it up back. Thank you so much for, we'll give your vocal cords a rest, too, a little bit.
Sorry, recovering.
Add a few comments, too, I think, did you have questions? I wanted to go back to one of your slides, I have several points and then, with several questions and then a couple of points. Back to, I think it's page 13 of your slide deck, it's exhibit 25, is, yeah, I think that's right. You, you said something, at least that I heard, as the 80 to 100% AMI is something that the market is serving people pretty well, or addressing, did I mishear that?
In rental, in rental.
In rental, okay, good.
Very big difference, yeah.
Yeah, no, that, that's helpful. And, you know, I, I think I know what your answer is on this, but, you know, one way of doing comp plan and, and land use related to it is to do and finish your comp plan, and then to go through your zoning. Another way, which we have had discussion about, is doing comp plan, and we have that process, which ought to be finished up pure in March, we think, but not necessarily waiting around to start moving on zoning. Do you have any thoughts about that as perhaps, I mean, you know, if we have the option to do that, is that something, all things considered, you encourage?
So, good question. I, I will give an example of a project that I worked on, the Diagonal Plaza, probably familiar in Boulder, 28th and Diagonal was an old shopping center, it sat there forever, the DMV's still there, nobody worry. And the zoning there was, there's some really antiquated zoning that required a, a square foot of open space per unit, which was baked into our code and really drove density down. So like, on that project, we could only do, let's say, I can't remember the number of units, but maybe a fourth of what got built. And we pointed that out to City Council and the Developers Trammell Crowe Residential and Boulder Housing Partners. So Boulder Housing Partners actually has 25, the 25% units are on-site and next to their other housing, which is called Hawthorne Court. And so we went to council, and we talked to them, and we did a special ordinance. And so that was a tool that was used to get more housing, a better housing outcome than what the comp plan and the zoning allowed, without waiting for the big overhaul. Now, that project then got approved, and they fixed the zoning and removed that this kind of density clause that was kind of baked in there in this weird way, because it didn't really create good open space, it just was a density limiter that was kind of snuck in there a long time ago. So that is a tool, and then there was a lot of whereas's in there, as because it was producing this and that, and, and it was in alignment with the city's housing goals and the needs, and so that was a way that, a, a tool that has been used. I, I don't know, you know, you, you still have PUDs, that, you know, you still, I think you still have to show alignment with your comp plan, but if you had other policies in place, like, from a, I don't, again, I'm not, I'm not your, you're the city manager, so I don't want to, but maybe there's another way to create policy direction, or you already have it, that there would be a way to, that PUD could be in alignment, because it's meeting certain outcomes that you don't have to wait for the comp plan and the zoning. I don't know if that, I don't know, are there other ideas that you thought of?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to do it, I think if the, if the city council, and we've talked a little bit about this, trying to find, if there is an opportunity to move forward with, with a rezoning, and, you know, that's something that we could still do, or initiate before the development code update actually changes some of the zoning, so that's a long process. And so we do have that on our mind if we have an opportunity to do it. And then there's, there's capacity to, to do things, right? Because we've got a lot of things, you know, that are, so, it takes a lot of capacity to initiate that, and there's a lot of additional things that we're doing, including the interim update, you know, there'll, there'll be some effort there. So that's where we're focusing our energy right now.
I'm obviously separating out capacity issues entirely, and they're very important in all this. There wasn't as much discussion yet, or at least I, I didn't hear as much directed to, I want to say completely, or virtually completely, private sector projects. I mean, clearly there are ones involving other government agencies and public-private partnerships, and that's, all that's good, but there are some entities that are for-profit that do this themselves. One of the things that I've heard that's an advantage about that, especially from a people power standpoint, is they take care of the qualifying and all the ongoing administrative stuff, which is, as I understand it, pretty difficult, it's, it's pretty intense. What, how do they figure into the kind of strategy that we're trying to create here?
I think they actually fit well into the first one and the third one, so this, I, in my mind, these were both probably for-profit affordable housing developers, and there's quite a few of them. Locally, we have, you know, Element does a lot of this work, Penrose is another, they're doing a project in Superior, a senior housing project, and I believe they're using the 123 money and the tax exemption, so they, you know, there are, and I talked to these developers, they were part of the groups that I spoke with, Gorman's another one, they're bigger, but they're, I've worked with Kimball Krangle on projects, there are, Cobal does affordable housing development, they're right here, they own a lot of land, I have not, I haven't spoken to them yet, but the, you know, the nonprofits are really like Thistle Habitat, the Housing Authority, and maybe like Urban Land Conservancy, or, or, you know, another nonprofit, but they're typically, especially Habitat and Thistle, are not doing a lot of scale, they're doing, you know, 10, 12 units. And I'd mentioned the factory when we were kind of side talking over here, Boulder, I don't know if you have a chance to see Boulder Mod, it's the modular factory that the city of Boulder built with, in partnership with the school district and Habitat, it is really cool, and it came out, I worked in Ponderosa Mobile Home Park for about, yeah, eight years, and was actually a, it kind of came out of that, because that project, the city bought a mobile home park, it didn't want to displace residents, but over time wanted to replace mobile homes with fixed foundations, and Habitat wanted to build them, but we didn't want to disrupt the community for 20 years by, you know, building, and so Kurt came up with this idea, and it's, it's operational, and their first duplex got set in Ponderosa, and they will be, I believe, building some homes in Lewisville with Thistle. It's a great program, you should go to a tour if you've seen, have seen it, it's really cool. I'm a big modular home, I used, I did a whole development with Modular, and we used to have factories up in northern Colorado, and you can be, Habitat volunteers can build indoors, so it makes volunteering a lot easier, so you're not up on scaffolding, outside in the cold, and then it's also partnered with the tech program at BVSD, so it's just like this incredible, huge investment, it wasn't cheap or anything, but they are now, you know, lots, so that's another strategy we didn't really talk about, but, you know, if Lewisville had four lots, you know, you could partner with Boulder Mod and four lots, you know, you could partner with Boulder Mod and get, you know, get those units out of the, the factory. They will, they're, they're going to be building for Ponderosa first, but there will be room in their assembly line for more units. So, they are looking for lots. Again, the scale's smaller, but it's, you know, again, you can target like you, and I'm not saying you have to pick one or the other. It's good, I think it's good to do both and you have some tools that I talked about with what the city is doing through funding they've received to do, you know, buy down of units. And then, you know, so there's some for-sale opportunities and then I think the front is really these larger projects that do require usually tax credits or, you know, pretty significant funding sources. You know, I don't know the actual numbers in Lewisville, but I'm going to say, you know, to build a house is probably $800,000 and you, to sell it for 400, so you need, these are just rough numbers, but it's pretty close. $400,000 in subsidy is what you would need for one unit to get it to 120% AMI for sale. Now, again, if that's your priority and that's where we want to go, that's, you know, I'm kind of asking these questions, or do you, or is more units at a lower income? Doesn't mean you have to pick one or the other, but can't do it all. And it does require a significant amount of subsidy for for-sale middle. This magical middle income that, I was just on a panel, like a TEDx panel talked about this. It's, there's no funding for this. There's no, there is middle-income housing tax credits. It's a new tax credit, but it's for rent. And it doesn't really work here because your rents are middle-income. It doesn't work in Boulder. It might, it might work in Crested Butte or Aspen or somewhere like that. So, there is, other than local subsidy, or, you know, what developers do is they just, they build, and you, I think you have some of these projects, maybe we build 12 units and two of them are affordable for sale and 10 are market and they're really expensive and then you've got two that you, you know, so that, that, those kind of scale can happen, but you have to find that those two units need $800,000 in subsidy. It's coming from the market units. So, those units are more expensive. So, it's a, it's a tough problem to solve.
Do, do we need to, as a council, give you a sense of something like, well, here's the balance of rental versus for-sale affordable units, however we want to define affordable? Is that important for us to, to tell you? I, I don't know that I'm prepared to do that or that anybody else on council is right now, but I, is that something that is, is, that you need from us?
I, well, I would, I think that, yes, and to get to a prioritization and a toolkit of, I think that would be where we'd like, we don't have to do it tonight, but to think about what the priorities are and what, again, $2 million, we can, you know, we can come back and slice it and dice it in different ways and show you what it can do in different scenarios. And then, what, what is it that's, that's your priority? We know what the, we have a lot of data, what the market says. That shortage of, was it 2,500 units? It's a lot. So, where, where does that, do you want more units, less, you know? Yeah, so let's, I think, think about that. And when I come back next, maybe I can lay out scenarios that would show what that money could be used for. I think I heard a little interest in this idea of de-risking a project, like what money would that require? You know, where would that go? Would it take the whole 2 million? What do you get? I've thought a lot about like, how do you also not put yourself to at risk so you don't end up owning something that goes to referendum and can't be built on? I mean, that's not, that's not the outcome we want either. So, I think there's a lot, I mean, I've, I've, I've actually heard a lot, but I'd love any more feedback on how your priorities, and you can do it next time as well.
Yeah, well, and I don't know that that's a box I want to open. We'll see if other council members want to open that box. I do think with, yeah, in just a second. Yeah, we probably should take public comment. Is there any other question before we do take public comment? Thanks. Okay, do we have any public comment? No, all right, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of more, I guess, comment and question sort of thing. I mean, I agree, like, so I've been like attending a lot of the different workforce and attainable housing, like tours and information that have been going on for the whole region, the whole Denver metro region, right? So, it's down in, and you guys already know this because I told you about my, both Josh and I did it touring down south. And in Centennial and Lone Tree, Cobal actually built like really tremendous workforce housing or attainable, they, they're for rent units. But, and, and they, they're amazing. They are right next to like market rate, they look identical to it, you wouldn't know which was which at all. But they're expensive and you're right, it just takes like a flat dollar amount of investment basically to, to help them pencil some stuff in. And, and it's like, okay, well, if $2 million is what you need for that project, or maybe you need 101.5 million versus us buying land if you already own land or what have you. But, you know, I think one of the things that we hear a lot about and through the comprehensive plan too, is people, people are really in favor of us adding new construction, adding new housing in places. But what I do hear a hesitation with is, you know how the, the new downtown Superior's looking with very tall buildings, incredible density, lot of condos versus kind of the, what is that, the east side of the downtown where you have some single-family homes, even if it's only separated by five feet, they're still single-family, or you have townhomes where people have that sense of, this is my space, above me and below me, I can walk my dog outside, this is my, like, so we hear, like, what I hear a lot when I go around here is, that's really what people want. We have a lot of seniors who live in these huge, like 3,400 square foot houses and there's nowhere to go in Lewisville and they don't want to move out of Lewisville, right? And so, I think, you know, helping us to figure out ways that we can do more, not set the limit at 60% and below. And one of the things I learned though is the funding, this is where the state and the government limits the developers. If they try to do mixed housing, they can't get the money. It's almost like you can build that for, you know, 80 to 120 or 150 AMI, but this, all this, if you want the money, it better be below 60. And that's where, like, they, and is that, I mean, is that what you have heard, like, seen as well, like, that's the trick? And so, we would almost need-
Rules.
Yeah, right, and they're ridiculous rules because they don't fit this region. They might fit other regions of the country, but they certainly, or other, even of the state, but they certainly don't fit us. You know, when, when we have a teacher who makes $60,000 a year and they can't get a townhouse and God forbid, they're married to an accountant and they make actually combined income of over 120 grand, they're still broke, they're still driving, you know, like older cars or what have you, and they can't buy something because we don't offer the mix. Then, most of these people I'm talking, they don't want a rental apartment. They have a rental apartment. They want to buy, they want to buy a place to live, to, to make a life in Lewisville, right? And so, how do we provide for that? Like, that's what we hear, like, that's the trick and that's what we need, help in figuring out, we've got money. I mean, Caleb has a cool idea of how do we, how do we recirculate the money instead if it's just like a one and done? Like, are there things that incentivize one project, come back to us and then another? Or, and, you know, so that, so that it, like, it builds on it, right? And, or maybe it is enough that we set an example and that example is what is like, oh, the open light went on, right? Like the open business light, like you're talking about. I mean, we could start like calling your department the yes department, Rob, but I don't know if you'd like that.
We'll get you a button.
So, but that's what I, that's, that's where I go with this is, you know, I, like, I feel right now like we're leaving the room with exactly where we were when we walked in. No offense. I mean, there's a lot of good information here, but like, these were some of the options that we, that we kind of knew about. It's how do we move forward? Now, like, what can we move forward?
Well, I, yeah, sorry.
Like, that's, so that's where I'm just still like really confused with, what is the next step? Like, where do we move from here? Where do we go with this? Like, what are those opportunities that we can grab? And, and I'm hoping you'll, I mean, you obviously can't just go do this, but like, that level of specificity, it's almost like, you know, giving us too many choices. Like eight paint colors, give me two.
Well, I think the idea was to stimulate a discussion, which we've had. I, I, I will say the idea that, and I'm happy to share this TEDx panel, it was in, in Boulder, but it was, we talked about middle-income housing and the idea of what you want. People want a house that they, they want the house that we were building in the 70s when we were mass building houses. That house, like I said, is at least $800,000 to build and to get it to a sales price at 100% AMI, that example, it needs to sell for 432 to 504. There's a gap of $400,000 for that one house. Where does that money come from? So, you could take the $2 million and do five houses. That's the question. I mean, there's no magical solution here. There's no, I mean, unless, I think with scale, you can get to more impact. So, if you had 20 acres or 30 acres or 50 acres, you can start to get more impact with that and maybe you could get 20 for-sale homes and 30 townhomes and 50, you know, a senior apartment complex. So, there's also a scale issue. So, I think what I'd like to do next time is bring like a case study and show you, okay, here's a four-unit thing, you know, you want four middle-income, for-sale, deed-restricted homes. Is that what you want? Because they're still deed-restricted. That, that, and that is, that is a policy decision. Yes, we, we want to, because that family or whoever isn't going to make the 15% when the market goes up. So, I, I think deed restrictions are great. There's lots of people that are living in homes and, and saving a lot of money and not paying it in rent. But for a lot of those people, renting makes more sense because it's more affordable. So, I just, I think there's a lot to unpack here of like what, or do we just really want to build like 50 or 60 or 70 units and kind of get more in the market that then, again, like starts to loosen things up a little bit? Because not every senior is going to move into apartment, but some might, you know, or their kids might come and move and be closer to their grandparents. I mean, there's other tools, ADUs, but there's no silver bullet. I'm trying to come up with is big a bang for that buck. $2 million will go really fast. And so, that's what I want to try and present hopefully next time is like, and then, what can you do with that? Like, you could buy land and, and maybe, you know, start your path on a 60 to 70-unit project near transit. Or you could, you know, again, we can say, I only want middle-income for-sale houses and so, I can, that math, that's actually pretty easy to lay out for you, unfortunately. And there's just no, I mean, this is a crisis in the, in the country. We're not building enough houses and the truth is, our neighbors to the east are building lots of houses. And so, faced with a decision of like, what can I buy here and buy there, people are still choosing to go east. And that's just, you know, we can't, we don't, you guys have a land, you're, you're still, you have land, but you're not bountiful in land. You're bountiful in other resources in a great community and, you know, great downtown and open space and all those things.
Other council members?
And a train. Can't forget the train.
Do you have something, Councilmember Cooper?
Sure.
Okay. And if you, if you want to, I'm not forcing you to, I'm just asking.
Maybe just to try to briefly address some of your, your questions at the end of the presentation. So, you know, of the four strategies that you emphasized, I, I'm interested in most of them. I think maybe the least is probably the buy-down of existing or newly-developed units. I just feel a little bit like with, with the money that we've set aside, you know, we're not going to accomplish that much through that strategy, you know, although it's still of interest to me. But the other ones I'm quite interested in and I'm definitely interested in being proactive.
I, I would echo that. I think those are the three that I found most interesting. I think it's good to be proactive to the extent that that's helpful. I mean, we don't want to, I worry that by doing certain, taking certain kinds of steps, we may be not, I mean, I guess it depends on what kinds of particularly the de-risking steps we can do that no matter what we do, it's going to be a good thing for partners. But not so much that we would somehow screw up the, the, the possibility of getting a development partner would be good. I, I want to come back maybe to, though, to this issue of rental versus for-sale housing. I don't have a number in mind, but for my part, I'm not, I think one of the things that matters to me and one of the things I did take away from the 300, 301 discussion was in part the importance of getting diverse housing. That simply having for-sale housing is not, I think, doesn't solve the problem. It's really good to have a range because you want to be able to give people, particularly younger people, the opportunity to live here first, rent and move up the chain. That that's, that's what's going to make a lifetime difference, at least as I read the, the literature on this stuff. And, you know, so that's important, at least to me, that we, we don't just simply set out on a course of doing nothing but condos or nothing but townhouses and less expensive stuff. I mean, I, and, and as I understand it also, that, that can be a very valuable or a, a great value proposition for the builders because they can, you know, they're, they're able to put together a lot of units and make up for what perhaps they wouldn't get from, from selling larger homes or something like that. I don't know whether others on council agree with me on that, but that's something that I think I'd like to be mindful of because for every parent who has a kid who they really want to be able to buy a house here, there are plenty of people who aren't in Lewisville who I think we want to come here, be a part of the fabric and move up the chain. So, that's just my thought. Yes, Councilmember Hamlet?
Thank you. I know we're an hour and a half into a very important topic, but obviously, we're not going to solve all of it tonight. There's plenty more to be discussed. I'll say my, my closing thoughts on this are, you know, as, as it relates to like the diversity of housing stock, rental versus ownership, all of those great topics. I would lean more into the housing study and kind of what came of that because there is so much engagement around that topic, all the people the mayor just mentioned, you know, our intention was they would engage there and tell us what they wanted to see the endpoint. What I'm looking at, my role in this tonight is how do we get to that endpoint through policy and strategy guidance from the DICE? I, I agree with Councilmember Cooperman's comments regarding more interest in the strategies outside of the one that was buy-down. Doesn't mean not interested in it, but it doesn't really seem to rise to the, the top for me. As far as subsidizing properties or fees, I don't know that I can make a really clear guidance on that tonight. What I do think is clear to me is that we need to be proactive because we haven't as much as maybe we should be or could be in the past and look where we are now. We desire more. So, I think being proactive is definitely something we need to do. And it sounds like maybe a reasonable path forward is a few of those strategies working in parallel will get us to this endpoint that people said they desired in the housing study. So, I think, you know, I'm interested in continuing this conversation. Maybe the guidance we give you tonight, you have a little even more meat to bring to the table where we can start having those discussions about percentages of, you know, rental, single, those sorts of topics. But I hope that's helpful. Super helpful, thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Excuse me, do you have a decent amount of material to work with as we go forward? I mean, I'm not going to summarize everybody's comments because I think-
I got it.
-you've heard them and looked like you were taking good notes, so.
Yeah, I took notes and I appreciate, yeah, I really appreciate it. I, I hear a lot, it's just great to interact and I got a lot out of this. So, I hope in the second phase, I can actually bring you some more real examples. So I hope in the second phase I can actually bring you some more real examples. The proactive piece, how do we, how do we open Lewisville for business and the dialogue? I have some ideas that I'm already percolating on, talked to Rob about, so this is really great. It's a hard discussion to have, but it's important. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, because this has been really helpful, both, both your presentation and the discussion, and you're addressing some of our initial questions, and certainly from my part, just sort of stumbling around in this new, new area. I hope that what will come of it, at the very least, is that we are open for this kind of work. I, I think that's really what we heard during the 301-300 campaign, and so look forward to the next discussion that we have.
I'll be back. Thank you for your time.
Do we have a time yet set for that? Or not yet? Okay, we'll work on that. Good.
Great.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. The next item is going back to what was formerly 6E. So it was, I, I believe, I will just hand it off to Councilmember Cooperman to set us up.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, when I was looking through the applications for boards and commissions, it was really just the Open Space Board. There were three applications that I thought pretty highly of, and none of those appeared on the list for interviews. So I was interested in adding interviews for Greg DiMedio, Rebecca Karch, and Jeffrey Ott.
Thoughts?
I'm just curious, is there anybody that's, that applied for OSAB that is now being excluded from the interview process?
Who, yeah, we're not interviewing everybody.
That's what I was, I just didn't know how many applicants. I was curious to know at this point now that we're not taking the advice of the, the subgroup that made the decisions, you know, is there a reason to be looking at all of them instead of just now these added three? I just wasn't sure, so. I didn't know how many, like, is there only one other that's not been considered?
Well, all of them were considered in the decision that, that Deb and I made to recommend. There, the two reappointments, we thought, who, people who've applied to be reappointed, we thought were good without an interview. We didn't need to, to do that. And then we named three. I think what Josh is saying, and he clarified this with me earlier today, is he's not substituting three for the ones that we put in, but adding three interviews to that. But even then, I think there would be one who we would not be interviewing, and it's, if I'm remembering correctly, maybe two. One of them is like a, I think we're, we've already taken that person off because she was one of the very few people who applied for PeapLab, and we decided that's...
She needed help.
She's going to get appointed without an interview for PeapLab.
Okay. Great.
So I, help me, Deb. There may be a couple of them that, that wouldn't be interviewed of the list of all of them. I think Peter.
If we add the three that Josh is proposing, the only person who applied who would not be interviewed would be Peter Clark.
Should we interview him, too? I, I feel like maybe we should extend at least the interview option to him as well then, maybe?
Oh, and also Daniel Macy, sorry.
The two of them. I, I don't, I mean, we went through them pretty carefully in order to winnow down the numbers. I, I mean, it is obviously possible to say, okay, since we're adding in three, we should add all the rest of them. I don't, I have only heard, at least from Josh, just about the three that he wanted to add. I'm sort of inclined to proceed by exception. If somebody has others they want to include for specific reasons, that's great. But I, you know, otherwise, we would have, we would have included the other two who aren't getting interviews.
Right, as, as well as the three. So is there a reason, Josh, that you don't want to interview the other two as well, that only those three?
I mean, I, I just looked through the applications myself and sort of, and just, you know, ranked them based on the applications. And for, for OSAB in particular, my ranking was, I, I mean, I assume that's roughly what you did, and that's how you chose who to interview. So for OSAB in particular, my ranking was, was the, was the one case that was rather different from what was recommended. And so, you know, just from reading the applications, those three people were my top choices based on their applications, and they didn't line up with the recommendation that's...
So I see, so had you been part of the process, you actually would have recommended those three for interviews and not the other three at all? Those would have been the three?
Yeah, if I had to, right.
Interesting perspective. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. All right. I move that we also interview Greg DiMedio, Rebecca Karch, and Jeffrey Ott for the Open Space Advisory Board.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
I'd like to add them all in to be interviewed.
The ayes have it, and we'll add those to the list. Just for the, the sake of logistics, can we just walk through when we're doing the interviews? And I think we've got our interviews, when we're doing them, starting at...
Five.
And it'll just take a little bit longer.
Yeah. So I have a, it's Monday, December 8th, starting at five. If you add these three, it'll probably be close to 10 o'clock by the time you're done.
Okay. I, I don't hear anybody, but you can certainly speak now if that's too late, you'd rather do it over two nights. I think personally, I'd rather just plow through it, but open to suggestions.
I'm fine, just adding on the extra time. Just get it done in one night.
All right.
Are we also going to do the discussion and decision that night after the, okay?
Yeah. That's what we've done in the past. I think that's a little easier than kind of restarting the next day or a few days after that. I think one thing I would also say, there's one person who we are not reappointing based on the discussion that we're having, and I will contact that person myself. We have one, Jeff Moline, who is a current person, but he's being interviewed. He's on Planning Commission and has, I think graciously suggested he's okay with pulling back if that is the will of council, and he's been an extraordinarily valuable member of Planning Commission, and we thought a really good person to be interviewing as well as the others that we've suggested. So if there's nothing else, I think we've resolved that.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
Is there any desire to start sooner than 5:00? Jenny's giving me the look.
We found in the past that it's difficult for people that work to have, people want to unload rather than front-load the interviews, so it's even hard to get people to get here at 5:00.
And it may be a challenge sometimes to get interviewees in the order that we want them, starting at 4:00, too, I would suspect. Anyway, I guess the, the final question has to do with questions that we're going to ask. And I'm certainly open to thoughts that people have about that. You know, I, yeah, I mean, we can, is it, you know, I think it's perfectly fine for, Deb, I to draft some questions and, you know, based on things that we've done in the past, and circulate those, you know, here pretty soon so that we can have a good set of questions. One thought, and it partly dovetails with what Councilmember Hamilton said, think about whether we want to either ask about or perhaps just inform people who are being interviewed about the importance of staff, the fact that people on boards and commissions are not going to be directing staff. We can wait for the, for the, you know, the orientations for that, it's fine, but if that's something that you want to think about, or just mentioning quickly, that may be something that's worthwhile. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So to answer your two questions as it relates to the interview questions, I feel like, if I recall correctly, the last two years, we've pretty much had the same set of questions. We might have done a little bit of tweaking year to year. So I am on board if you and Councilmember Fahy want to review those, see what's still appropriate, see what tweaks need to be made. And I appreciate you mentioning the interactions with staff and how, you know, they liaise. I, I think that's probably most appropriate to, to not put in the interview process, but more, you know, retain in the, in the onboarding process as it relates to these positions.
I don't, I think that's perfectly fine. And we would have looked at, we're going to look at prior questions. It's like, we're not going to do zero-based budgeting on this. We're going to look at the prior questions and, and see what needs to be changed, or at least we would propose. And we'll try to make it clear, if we're proposing something new, what we do, you know, if we can redline or whatnot. I think that's good. We do have a list of questions that we did last year, right? That may be helpful. Good. All right. I think unless there's something else, we can move to the city attorney's report.
I have no report, thank you.
And upcoming agenda items and identification of future agenda items. Are there any thoughts? Okay. All right. Then I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
If we want our city and our downtown area to have character, to be vibrant, unique, and to grow in a way that we don't lose our history, the history that made this community what it is, we...